Okay, so why don't we start with attendance? Steve Brown.
Here.
Mark Jewel.
Here.
Catherine O'Callaghan.
Here.
Megan Brinsey.
Here.
And Catherine Harvey. Do we have Carolyn Coffey on the phone or no?
I didn't see her.
Maybe later.
Maybe later.
Elaine may be joining us later, too.
Yes.
So we're just missing Sarah Pease and Elaine. Well, we said Elaine. Mary Lou. Right? Okay.
Oh, Sarah Pease is coming in.
Great. All right, so did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Should we wait for Sarah before we vote? We might as well. Megan, did we lose you or you just have your camera off? Maybe we've lost Megan Brinsey.
No, I'm here. I just turned it off for a minute.
Okay, hi Sarah.
Hi.
Okay, so any changes to the minutes for the March meeting?
Look good.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, meetings, minutes are approved. Okay.
Also have to do the April minutes.
We didn't have a meeting in April. We had a special meeting.
There was, there was, no, it was an open meeting on April 4th. And then we just decided not to do the warrants.
So the meetings, the minutes for the special, yeah?
Yeah, it's, yeah. They're on the, on the drive.
The one that where we voted to approve the-
The outdoor space discussion and the find free library initiative. And then a little bit of other things. Basically, that was it.
We should just quickly take a look at those.
I think Catherine's-
It should be in the May folder, I think.
I think we lost Catherine. She's frozen.
Yeah, I think she's frozen.
At first I thought she was in shock over. I was gonna say, it's okay, we'll figure it out.
Oh, Catherine. Yeah, so it's in the May folder.
Let's see.
She said she was having Wi-Fi issues earlier.
There we go. May?
Now we don't have a, oh wait, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We have a quorum.
There she is.
There she is.
I just, for no apparent reason, lost my Wi-Fi abruptly, but I'm back now. So sorry about that. Okay, so we were about to vote on the minutes for the April meeting. Do I hear a motion? Anyone?
I was so moved, but I wasn't there, so.
I wasn't either.
I wasn't there either.
So do we not have a quorum to vote on those minutes, then?
Carolyn's on. The phone.
Carolyn?
Yeah, I don't think she was able to participate, but she was gonna listen tonight, so.
Oh.
So then-
We can vote them in next time if everybody-
For the next meeting, yeah.
I'm here if you need me to vote on those minutes. I saw them. They looked fine to me. I can move the April minutes.
So, but how many of us are here that were there? Three, four?
I wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
Oh.
Let's-
Only three of us.
There's no-
Why don't we just vote on it at the next meeting? Yeah. Okay, so moving on. Up first is Megan. Yes?
Yes. Thank you. So we don't have a, we have few topics, but they are exciting. Let's see. So. Let's see. Okay, so the first thing I'd like to have a discussion on and not vote in tonight unless we're feeling extremely confident, but more of a discussion and then something to review. So there's been, as many of you have probably heard in the news, there's been an uptick on groups going into school libraries and public libraries and requesting to reconsider some of the materials that might be there. So they're kind of looking to increase the banned book list. So in preparation for that, OCLN directors got together and just discussing, you know, best practices and how we can kind of support each other because there's a lot of OCLN, knock on wood, has not had a problem yet, but some of our neighboring networks, library networks have had a pretty substantial issue with with people coming in and requesting to get rid of certain books within the library. So Rob, who's the director of libraries in Weymouth, put together a form that we could all make edits to, to make sure that it fit for our library. But the idea is, is if our forms are similar, we're kind of answering some of these requests in a united front and we have, we have similar protocols. We're kind of working together and supporting each other because some of these groups can be fairly aggressive. So. So this is the form. Our logo's not coming up here. Oh, there it is. Okay. So the first paragraph talks about the form and, and their process so that they would need to fill out the form and give it to the library director for review. They need to identify the item, what the format is, what, who the request is being initiated by, and generally we're seeing that it's a, it's a group rather than an individual. We're also indicating in the top paragraph, this is important, I'm sorry, I skipped it, that you have to be a Cohasset resident with a concern to challenge one of our materials. And that's really important because it's a lot of times it's folks from other states kind of going after as many libraries as possible. And so indicating that you have to be a resident of your town is, is important because it, you know, our taxpayers are the ones that pay for our collection and, you know, their concern are our concerns, but I don't think I'm as concerned as somebody from Missouri who doesn't like a book that we have or our material. But if we don't specify that, then we are unfortunately open to debate with that topic. And just some, some questions about, you know, what about the material bothers them? What brought it to their attention? Making them identify, you know, pages or, you know, timestamps on, if it was an audio. If they had actually reviewed the whole thing. Do they feel as though it does not comply to our collection development policy?
Is that posted, Megan?
Yes, our collection development and policy is under policies on our website. It does need to be updated in the sense that we have more collections now, but for this particular conversation, it's in, it's in fine shape to to continue with this, but it is something that people have access to. This question I like is, is there a different resource that we could provide that they feel would meet, better meet their expectation? And and then the last question, do you believe that other people should have the right to decide what materials and information are available to you and your family and have access, why or why not? So what would happen procedural wise is if we had a form like this submitted, I would bring it to a trustees meeting or we would need to have a special trustees meeting just to discuss the form and the points of the person who submitted it and then I would go back and reply. So knock on wood, I don't think this is really something that we might, would have to combat, but because it's, you know, happening, I just wanted to make sure that we are prepared and that the staff is prepared for something of this nature to happen.
I'm going to unshare so I can see all of you.
Megan, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there, does it make sense that you should say, add to that form what your library card? Because obviously if you're not a member of the library.
So that's an interesting question. So some libraries are saying either a resident of their town or an OCLN card holder. So we're already being a little conservative by saying that you have to be a Cohasset resident. And the reason other libraries are inviting other libraries, other towns, because they feel as though if you're a library card holder, then you're a member of our entire network and you should have a say in, you know, the books that are available in our entire network. And that's their viewpoint. My viewpoint is the taxpayers in Cohasset pay for our materials and the taxpayers in Situate don't, so I don't feel as though they have a say in what our collection has. I don't know if I can go all the way to specifying if they have a library card or not, because technically if they don't have a library card, they're still a member of our community.
I see.
Can I ask a question? I didn't see in the form. Do you require proof of residency?
No, it just asks for an address.
Anyone could write any address if they wanted to, right?
They could, they could. So, you know, we could require proof of residency. I would probably bring that back to my director's group and just see what people had to think about it. I don't see anything wrong with that, but there's been some things that have been brought up that I probably, I don't think I would have thought of amongst the director's group regarding, you know, collection sharing and things like that. So, but I think it's a good idea, but I would like to bounce it off some of my colleagues, probably.
Another question might be, and I haven't thought this out, so it may be completely off the wall, but are you a taxpayer? In Cohasset?
As a question, are you a taxpayer of Cohasset?
Yeah, I don't, I mean-
Yeah.
Because I like your logic that this is, books are here as a result of taxes. And therefore, it should be taxpayers for. Get him in.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I understand that we share our collection, but if you don't like what we have in our collection, then don't bother.
There, there are people who serve who aren't necessarily taxpayers, you know. We have, you know, dependents and so forth. I mean, I think asking for residency probably gets you there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, just trying to-
No, no, I, I understand. Like, I appreciate the impulse to sort of establish standing and it's, I think it's really critical. But I think residency is probably adequate because, again, you know, one of the things that we sort of pride ourselves on is that it's, you know, libraries are open. Everything we have is open to everyone. But you're not allowed to complain about it unless you live here.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, if you're from Situate and you don't like the book that we have, then don't check that book out, you know, and you didn't have any kind of part of it being where it is.
Right.
So I'm hoping that, I realized that my report came in extremely late this, this month, so I would appreciate if everybody was able to take a look at it over the next month and maybe we could vote on it next meeting. And I would appreciate any feedback that you have. Okay. Next topic. Can you still see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. It looks a little bit different. They must have done an update. We had Steve Albright come on Thursday, May 5th, and the library staff participated in a training about de-escalation and library security. So we've had a little uptick in some patron behaviors and I think, you know, it's directly related to people are just exhausted with COVID and there's a lot of kind of town politics going on because it's around town meeting and town election and I just think there are some high tensions, but and we also have a few patrons that have popped up recently that are having some mental wellness challenges. So we are a safe place for them, so they come to visit us, which we're thrilled about. But sometimes we have been put into awkward situations with their behavior versus, you know, making sure other patrons are comfortable. So we did a really great training. He's nationally recognized for library security. He's written many books, most recently is the library security, better communication, safer facilities. And we were able to do this in partnership with Situate and Norwell Library, so he came on virtually. And we all were in our respective libraries and we were able to enjoy the training and split the cost three ways, which is fantastic. I think this is really helpful, especially to our newer staff, that, you know, sometimes it's alarming when somebody comes in and behaves poorly and it's hard to figure out how to, you know, negotiate the situation without making it worse. And I think that this was really worthwhile to them.
Some of the behaviors?
Oh, so we've had a woman specifically who's come in and thrown books on the floor and she's kind of specifically targeted one of our staff members. She's very sarcastic, but she can just be very kind of abruptly loud. And if things don't go her way, she gets really fairly aggressive about it. So like, I wasn't there and the coffee machine wasn't working and she screamed all the way out the door that we were the worst library and the coffee machine's awful and and so, and these things happen, but when it starts to become an issue for, you know, when she's screaming, it's upsetting to patrons and, you know, it's, it's you know, upsetting our whole building. And she was screaming swear words in front of kids one day in the, in the hallway on her way out. So we're working on, kind of working with the staff on things to say to her and because I think avoidance was kind of the first thing they, they thought of doing is like, if you know, if we don't respond to her, maybe she'll just go away. And that's not really how it works. So we needed to work on, you know, coming up with some language, practicing some language and things to say. We've just had people be incredibly rude recently, a lot of entitled behaviors and how to kind of negotiate that and make sure you're still following policy, but you're still, you know, providing a really excellent service to that person that's expecting excellent service. So but we've definitely seen an uptick and I know Situate and Norwell have too, and I'm sure all the other libraries have. It's just kind of been a strange, strange season.
Can you just say, what, what would you say, for example, in that particular example where she was cussing in front of kids?
So with this particular patron, because I'm familiar with her, I would just go up to her and say, so-and-so, you know, she's needs, she's kind of a straight shooter. So it would need to be, you know, very firm, but with a smile on my face. This is inappropriate behavior. You know that this is inappropriate behavior. There are children here. I'm gonna ask you to leave for the day. I'm happy to see you tomorrow again. And that generally works with somebody like this individual.
Thank you.
So, Megan, first of all, I'm really sorry that you guys are having to face this and I'm wondering, do you feel at any point that you're unsafe? I think this kind of behavior, I know we have, we don't know a lot of details, but I am concerned about, about your safety and the safety of others.
Yeah, and that's fair. And, and, you know, when you work with the public, you get everybody, unfortunately. So we've gone over, you know, keeping a safe distance, what kind of body language. So we talked in our training about, it's actually, um, what is it? CIA, no, secret service stance, right, Rowan? And so they stand with their hands kind of towards their lap and there's a reason for that stance and it's because it's a friendly but protective stance. So you look, your body looks neutral, but if there was something that needed to happen quickly, your hands are right available for you. But also keeping a safe distance, knowing when to just walk away and be, you know, a witness rather than the person that's involved. So if things are escalating to the point that you're becoming unsafe, it's time to just walk away and call the police and then step back and be a witness, because if things are really spiraling out of control or somebody's being violent and you're not, you're not gonna be able to stop them. It just got to a point. So, so we talked about kind of that stance, how to stay far away, keeping that body neutral. And then just knowing when to walk away. When somebody's starting to feel, when you start to feel threatened, because usually, you know, your, what's the word? Your instincts are generally correct. So if you're starting, if, you know, the red alarms are going off in your head, it's time to walk away and, and trust your instinct. And so we talked a lot about trusting our instincts and not hesitating if we're feeling uncomfortable. And so, and just knowing to call, you know, on our phone, it's 1-2-1-2, go straight to the police station so it doesn't route to 911 and go back to the police station and just go straight to Cohasset. And they'll know to come over. And that's just when we step back and let whatever happened, is happening, happen. So that was a lot that we talked about, too.
Are there any limitations to your, your obligation as, as a public building that would allow you to at some point not welcome people who are routinely problematic?
Yeah, so, so in Randolph, I went through this process fairly often. So what we would need to do, so we'd like to start, you know, with if somebody needs to be removed from the building, we use words, friendly words like, it sounds like you're having a bad day today. You need to leave for today and we're happy to see you tomorrow. So it kind of starts that way. And then as it gets, the offender misbehaves more and more, what needs to happen is a certified letter goes to their house. Generally, it's voted on by the board of trustees. So if I have somebody who is, you know, extremely threatening to the staff and needs a serious library timeout, I would bring it to the board. We would talk about whatever circumstances have gone on. We do document everything, anything that happens that is uncomfortable, anything. So even if something that I would perceive as comfortable and a staff member perceived as uncomfortable, it's documented because we want to make sure that everybody's feeling safe and that if we keep track of things that are odd and they continue, then we have a record. So we would then vote on whether we, you know, the board feels as though it's time to give somebody a letter and how long they should be asked to leave the library. So they would be given a no trespass. It would be certified and it would also be copied over to the police. So they would know that this person is a non-trespass.
But you don't feel in a position at this point with this particular patron that that's something you want to explore?
Not, not yet. So what we have done with this particular patron is we've contacted our social worker in town and we've had multiple meetings with her. Oops, somebody's trying to get in, let's see. Oh, I can't let in the calling call listener. And so she has approached this individual and is keeping an eye out because we've seen kind of a wellness decline in this individual. And so really this person just needs some help. And that's hopefully gonna solve the problem. So we've, we've worked with Officer Lopes and Stephanie at the senior center, who's the social worker. And they have started working with this individual to make sure that they are okay, because that's generally is the bottom line, is that if somebody's unwell and they're, you know, kind of lost souls, they do find themselves at the library because it's a friendly place to be. But we want to make sure this person's able to function in society. So we do have social worker office hours in the library because generally the library is a place where people who are struggling tend to hang out because it's, you know, welcoming, it's warm, there's, you know, there's entertainment and all these things. So so I think we've handled it really well and it seems like this person has gotten some help. So there was an interaction yesterday and it seems as though this person's doing really well.
Good. I'm so glad you have that resource available.
Yeah, it's wonderful. And that's, you know, generally our first step, too, is to try to figure out what's going on with this person and if we can help, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Go back over. All right. So some lighter news. So Michael and I, Michael works at the front desk. He started about a year ago. We went to EcoFest and had a table with all of our library of things, which was extremely fun and we got to chat with a lot of people. People were really quite happy to be there and to be out with their neighbors and their, their community members. So it was a really fun Friday. And I think it was great for the library as well. All right. Strategic plan progress. So we've only had so far 34 people respond to our survey. We did another email blast today. And I did take out their, the results so everybody could take a look. This document's also in the Google Drive, so if you want to take a closer look at it another time, that would be available, too. So we-
A little bit bigger.
Yeah, let me see if I can. Sorry, hold on one second.
You see right here the 100%? If you make it 150, it might go up.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Is that better?
Better, yep.
Hooray. Okay, great. So so the people who have responded the most are between 36 and 45, which I think is fairly interesting. And, you know, how often do you visit the library? Mostly weekly? If you do not visit the library, you know, why not? Tell us why. We didn't get, so we only had 10 responses to this, so I'm not sure what that says about the question or if that, just none of it applied to whoever was answering the survey. But mostly people said, and it was only three, they would use a neighboring library. So, I don't know. That was a successful question, but that's okay. And then we asked about why, you know, the main reasons they come to the library and it would kind of be what you suspect, to borrow a bestseller, borrow a book. Use the children's room, attend a program. So nothing there was all that shocking to me so far. We asked what kind of program people would be interested in and it kind of seems like all of the above. That they would be interested in taking a class or learning a language, sharing an experience or being social or volunteer. This was an important question to me. And so I'm happy that it came out the way that it did so far, at least is that people are able to find whatever material they're looking for. I think the main complaint of public libraries for a while was that if there was a new bestseller and you went to go get the library, you probably weren't gonna find it because there was gonna be a massive hold list that you were gonna have to wait on. So the Red Hot Reads collection, fingers crossed, was gonna make sure that that didn't happen at least as much. And I think we were successful there. So that's exciting. When would you come to an event? And it's kind of-
Whenever.
Yeah, kind of whenever. So I don't really feel like we got a solid answer there, but that's okay. This one was kind of interesting. So people would do in person or, or virtually, really. So how do you find out about library events and services? The number one answer is website and then our quarterly mailing, then the email newsletter, and then in the library. The number one answer is website and then our quarterly mailing, then the email newsletter and then in the library. Which I was a little surprised about. I thought for sure everybody was going to say either the, the quarterly mailing, just because it's right in their mailbox. Um, so the fact that people are making an effort to go on to the website and take a look at what we have was really interesting. Um, this one's a little crammed in and I apologize, let's see if I can even make it bigger. All right. Okay, library facility. Um, so for the most part, everyone feels as though we're, um, fairly excellent. Um, this one here was, I'm sorry that there wasn't a label that came up. Um. I'll have to look back on that. I don't know why that labeled thing come up. But seating and tables came out with the most, um, poor, um, votes, which was a little bit of a bummer since we just redid it. Um, I'm wondering, though, if some of the answers that we're receiving are from people who haven't been back since the pandemic, maybe? I don't know. Um, but I was a little disappointed with that. But in hindsight, this, um, was like six votes. So out of the thirty-four, most people were very happy with our seating and there were six people that said that it was poor.
Maybe all those people think that we should have those chairs reupholstered and they'll be pleasantly surprised. And they come in and find those chairs.
The green reupholstered chairs.
Yeah.
Um, which came in yesterday, by the way, and looked fantastic, should have taken a picture.
Oh, great.
Um, um, so. Um, and this is just some general feedback that people gave about our facilities. Uh, this woman, the first person, I should say woman because I don't know if it's woman. Um, this first person, um, suggested that we put glass doors on the children's room to keep the kids from running out of the children's room, uh, because it's something that Situate has. Um, they would also, um, prefer to have books, um, rather than the computers on the right-hand side when you walk in. Um, the next person was interested in some more sustainability, so maybe a water bottle station, which we had talked about. Um, and I did receive a quote for, um, our solar panels. Um, I liked this one. Um, kids' activities, having an exit for moms who park in the back, who park near the, I think it's supposed to say playground, but she wrote park near the park. So I guess park near the park makes sense, too, but playground slash park. Um, this person likes the ebooks, which is great. Um, this person would not like us to remove any more shelves for seating. Um, electric car chargers are great and the outdoor story time permanently, which we'll talk about later. Now, let's see if I can make this even bigger. I guess I can, okay. Um, so you can review this in your folder, but, um, basically the lowest score that we got for library services, unfortunately, is adult programming, which is here. Um, but again, not horrible. Um, we had some low marks about finding materials, um, the quality of the book collection, some ebook question, um, collection questions. Um, but for the most part, we do things good. It's, uh, pretty much, we're in the good range of our services. Um, and here's some feedback about our services. Um, so this person lives near the Paul Prep but chooses to go to Situate uh, because they feel that the programming is better and has more things geared toward elementary schools' children. Um, the next person's interested in more STEM and Lego building groups. Um, we are bringing Legos back in June, so that's exciting. Um, and she, this person suggested a library scavenger hunt, which is kind of neat. Uh, this person would like us to consider making our photocopies cheaper. Let's see. Um, this person wants to know more about other libraries' events. Um, wishing we had kids yoga. Wishing that there was some for younger school-aged children. Outdoor space, outdoor programming. Um, this is some feedback on staff, so always great. This person feels as though we're pretty rude and they prefer to go somewhere else.
I don't know how many times I've been rude, too, when they walk in, yeah.
Oh, dear, um.
There's always one.
There's always one, it's, you know, um, this person loves the staff, especially Miss Moody and Miss Megan, amazing. Um, the next person, uh, indicates the blonde guy who is Michael. Uh, but they would like us to get rid of our charging stations because that's their favorite parking spot. Um, great staff, helpful, amazing, friendly and helpful. Um, wonderful with our kids, we love Mrs. Moody. So, um, that's what we have so far. We just did an email blast, so I'm hoping to gain some more responses. I'm open to other ideas to try to push this. I think we've done it. I mean, I think it's more consistency at this point. We've, we've gotten on most of the outlets that I can think of. Um, but if you have any ideas, I'm certainly open to, um, how we could probably get some more responses because thirty-four is just really not that great.
Do you have a target number?
Sorry. There, that's a good question, I don't. I was just hoping for, I guess we could talk about maybe a percentage of our community or, or what maybe our target number would be.
Did it go to, um, uh, like the one, four, three Facebook page?
Yep, it was only on there once, though. So I'm kind of maybe waiting till after elections because there's a lot of, um, content there and maybe, um, that would be a good time. Um, we're also in the Cohasset Anchor, which is the online newspaper that everybody's been looking at. Um.
Life on the Rocks?
I did not do Life on the Rocks and I heard that they're coming back. Yeah, oh, I don't think they want to.
They have a website, though, they just do their monthly, but have, is it possible to submit it to the schools?
Yeah, that's a great idea, I could do that.
I'd be open to that, but.
Maybe, uh, well, yeah, I was gonna say backpack flyer, but they don't do that anymore, do they?
I can, um, I can help with that. So we have a PSO, like it could go district-wide to all the schools, to everyone, that's, to all the families.
That would be great.
Yeah.
So it's. The Senior Center.
Yep, Senior Center.
And the Rec Department, our friends, partners.
If we do the Senior Center, though, I mean, will the, will they have help to fill that out online? Um, so it was sent to the Senior Center. I'll follow up with Nancy on how they were actually implementing it, whether they've, you know, put out paper flyers or if they've, how they've helped promote that. So it did go out to all of Community Services, but I didn't check up after that on how they actually utilized the content I gave them.
I wonder if they could do like a QR code on the desk when they come in? If staff could say, oh, if you want to do a survey in the library and then show them the QR code? Because I think most of the seniors probably have smartphones.
Yes, I'm also wondering, Bridget's there once a month doing tech drop-in. Maybe that's a good time, since we have a librarian there to assist.
I don't know if like the seniors will know what a QR code is.
No, I mean, if there's staff there who could show them the QR code and then all they have to do is take a picture and the survey comes right to their screen. You know what I'm saying? Like if they were in the, if there was staff there to say, oh, if you want to do a survey for the library, you can just, you know, with assistance.
I think the logical thing is to print it out, but I'm hesitant to do that because I like just feel like I'm killing a trade.
I like the idea of Bridget helping. I, I pick, like, I have to help my mother-in-law a lot and she can't, she's like, how do I type this? I don't know what I'm doing and, I, it's hard when they get older.
Yeah, or even we could do a separate program that's like, come answer our survey. We're here to help you. If not, we'll find you in the building.
Do you have a QR code at the front desk for people?
Yeah, yeah, and at both the doors.
Okay.
I'm thinking maybe I could grab, like, you know, the people that come at like five of ten that have to wait outside, that maybe they would.
Mm-hmm. Are you serving yet? I was wondering if you could do, you could have a little flyer at the Senior Center that says like free coffee and, and donuts at the library. Fill out the survey.
Food works and we could probably do that with the teenagers, too, at the basketball courts.
Yes.
And after, free after-school snack, if you answer.
For seniors, I'd, I'd come and fill it out.
All right, those are all good ideas. I'll, I'll implement some of those and see what happens for next month. Um, so that's great, okay.
Great, is that everything for you, Megan?
Um, I think I've got, oh, I just wanted to touch base on the library roof that kind of got suddenly voted on in a town meeting, which is not a terrible thing. But, um, so I, not that I wasn't aware that Nick was looking at solutions for our roof, but I wasn't aware that it was being, um, paid for at town meeting.
I was also very surprised by that. Just suddenly, I hit down, oh, look at that. They're getting the roof fixed.
Yeah, so I'm excited about it. I knew that there was debate going on at the capital budget on whether they wanted to fund it or not and I didn't have high hopes, so I didn't follow it very closely. And, um, shame on me because Nick was able to, um, negotiate it through the CPC. It's about a hundred thousand dollars. So what's happening is it's the rubber parts of our roof are failing, um, per the assessment that he received, um, earlier in the year. And it's not the slate that's failing. Um, so we're having all of our rubber parts of our roof, uh, replaced. Um, and.
So. Roof flat, is that?
Yes, so yes, that's exactly correct. There's a lot of flat parts of our roof, which is what the, with, uh, rubber is covering. And in fact, they told me that, um, most of the roof actually is just this rubber, um, product and only what we see is slate. So there's actually not as much slate, I think, as we perceive that there is. Um, and that was what they told me on my recent, the recent report, but.
About ten years ago. About ten years ago, Jim Sandell and I walked up on the roof. And what's missing is, uh, walkways, uh, so that you're not walking on the roof. And there's a couple of places where there's joints. And so you step on the joint and that's going to obviously create a leak. So, so hopefully, people will think about that.
Yeah, I, I, I think they've got, so they have specialists involved because our leaks were so bad. And facilities was fixing them all the time. So it's much their headache as it's been ours at this point because they're the ones that have to keep fixing the roof and then replacing all the ceiling tiles, so.
Maybe you could just, you know, ask them a nice innocent question. Does it make sense to put any walkways or can, what do you do about the ridges?
Okay, yeah, I will definitely do that. Then I'm going to be accused of crawling up onto the roof. Just tell them I, I heard from a bird. Um, that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Megan. Um, so Bronwyn, that's you.
I was just trying to get all the warrants together so I could remember what I was talking about. Um, we've got three warrants that have to get approved. Um, two of them, Catherine has already signed, so it's more of a formality. They've already been, been paid. And then the last one is, is the one for this meeting. Um, there's one from March that was just the, um, payment to Nora Spear for the fabric for the chairs. Um, I don't have the bill yet for the finished product, but you'll get that paid as soon as some, we receive that. And then the April, uh, purchases were pretty standard stuff. Some of the newspapers had to be renewed. They're getting kind of expensive, but people seem to really rely on us still getting them. Uh, and a fair amount of technology items, um, which was for our calendar and our, um, scheduling software and, um, our Museum Pass software. And then this month, uh, a lot of magazines are being renewed. Um, Museum Pass, Megan renewed the Zoom annual renewal, so we can continue to use that. Um, our, our marketing, um, permit for the post office so that we can send out the newsletter. Um, and that's about everything that I, that comes to mind that's, you know, unusual. Um, and our budget, we're down to, we have just the June and the June B bills. So hopefully it will all come exactly, we'll run out of money exactly at the end of the year. And we did get, um, the second installment of the state aid. We've got forty-eight thousand dollars in there. We've got some donations this month or in the last few months. Um, and our reimbursement from the Cultural Council from Storywalk, so that's all set. Um, so overall, we're doing pretty well. I'm happy to answer any questions about specific items or anything at all.
Any questions? Shall we take a vote? Right here, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, um, so to approve the bills for May, we'll do a roll call. Sarah Pease?
Yes, I.
Brooke Jewell? She indicated, hi. That's okay. Megan Brinsey?
Yes, I.
Steve Brown? Okay, take that as a yes. Catherine O'Callaghan, okay, there it is.
I.
And Catherine Harvey, I. Carolyn, I don't know if you can hear me, I don't think, or, or if you can, you said, I guess you weren't going to participate. If you want to vote, you can, um, but we have enough. So, uh, all right, so the bills are passed. Um, and so that brings us to my report.
Sorry to interrupt, but the, uh, yeah, I think you just said the May bills, but the April and.
Oh, it was April and May, you're right, thank you for correcting.
Three, three warrants.
March, April, and May, that's okay. We didn't vote on it on, no, because we skipped the April meeting.
Well, the March one was a special, um, because it was for the fabric and we wanted to pay Nora. So it was at the end of March, it was after the March meeting. It was just a one, one bill warrant.
Okay, so that vote was for March, April, and May. All right, let's just say, to correct the record, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay, I think that gets us there. Okay, so that's, that's all from you, Bronwyn. Okay, um, so which brings us to, uh, to my report. So, um, I just mostly have two things this month. Um, one is obviously an update on the outdoor space, which I'll get to in a minute. And then the other is just as we're coming into year end and, um, hopefully welcoming maybe a new trustee. Um, so actually, first, what I should say and what I would like to say is Catherine O'Callaghan, thank you so very much for your many years of loyal and dedicated service to the library and to the town. We all owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude and so thank you so much.
You're here. It was an honor to work with all of you and I admire so much all that you have done to make the library such a wonderful place for the community.
Well, right back to you and you will be very much missed by all of us. So I, I wish you all the best in the, in the next chapter. Um, so which brings us to, uh, nominating for, um, the upcoming year. Um, and a couple of things that I want to say about that. Um, I think it would be wonderful if maybe the chair role was supported by a vice chair. If that is something that interests anybody. Um, I am also would like to encourage anybody who's interested in taking on the chair role to certainly step forward. That is, um, you know, definitely something that any and or all of us should consider. Um, to, only to say that, you know, I, I'm happy to be in the role, but it's, I've been trying to give it the attention that it deserves and it's been a little bit tricky, um, in recent months as I started to, I went back to work part-time in November. So, um, I feel like I'm not as, um, always. So I feel like I'm not as always up to date on everything going on at the library as I typically am. So it would be great if, if either somebody wants to step in who can, can handle it. And/or if we had to, and we could sort of split up the duties with between a chair and a vice chair. So that is some food for thought. And then in the next meeting, we will ask someone to be the nominating chair, who will then solicit the nominations, and then we can have a fuller discussion when we have our new slate of trustees after the election. If that all makes sense. Thoughts, questions on that? Don't everybody talk at once? Okay, all right. So I think that's all we needed to say about that. Megan, am I forgetting anything on that? Okay.
Catherine, just to try to be constructive and not to volunteer. But can you think of how you might divide the job?
Well, I have thought about it a little bit. One thing I thought about was maybe just cycling it off month to month, the chair role, you know, just back and forth. Or it's maybe just a collaborative situation where, you know, there's a meeting that I can't go to, can you go? Or there's a, you know, whatever, some, something that needs to be done. You just sort of, you know, just keep in touch and sort of split it up as you go. I mean, I think either model would work fine.
One thing that I recall that Carolyn did very well was to stay on top of regulations that we had to comply with. And that would be, I don't know if it's possible to have that as one subset, you know, the sort of relations with Tom Hall, the Town Hall. And I'm just throwing that out, but it might be worthwhile for people to think about. How could we divide it in a way that wouldn't reduce the ability of someone to be chair, but make the load easier?
Just sort of delegate out a specific duty. Yeah, that makes sense. I usually just sort of look to Megan for all those answers.
So my, my, my two cents would be that just usually committees of this size or boards of this size tend to have kind of more than one point person. So what we have here is a chair and a, and a secretary. And I think since there's nine trustees, that may be, you know, another role to be determined by all of you wouldn't be a bad thing. It would, you know, because everything does tend to fall on the chair. And I think maybe having some other folks in charge of different things is, is fairly normal to other, other boards. That's my, my truth.
Right, even like signing the bills, you know, things like that. They're just, you know, that only take five minutes, but it just, you know, it still has to be done. So, so again, food for thought, if everybody could just sort of think it over a little bit in the coming weeks, and then, you know, we can have a fuller discussion and then take nominations at the next meeting.
Catherine, do you think you could make a list of things that like maybe prioritize where we could have assignments for people like what Megan was speaking to?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I can do that and circulate it to the group. Yeah.
Titles, but like if they need a secretary or they need somebody to sign the bills and then just make a list and delegate that out.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's very sensible. I can do that and circulate it. And then we can, you know, use that as a guide for the next meeting. That's a great idea. Okay. Okay, so then the next thing is the outdoor space. So I don't know if, if you all had a chance to look at the drawing that was included in the Google. But in any event, so we had, the Outdoor Space Committee had a meeting yesterday with Christmas McFarlane. And he had incorporated sort of all the feedback and prior meetings that we had had with him into a set of three drawings that are basically drawings of all the same sort of concept, but in three different views. And I think we have one of them here. I don't know if I, can I share, Megan, or do you want to share?
I can share. That's what I was attempting to do when I hit the.
Oh, okay.
All right, let me share that.
Okay, so it's kind of a zoomed out view. Yeah, that's better. Thank you, Megan. That's much better. So this is one of the three drawings, and it sort of best shows what the, what the thinking is. But so the idea is that, and I was about to point at my screen, but you're not going to be able to see what I'm doing there. So if you can see right alongside the building where it looks sort of like bricks, you know, that's, that is all patio space. And those little squares are meant to represent chairs. So that if we were having outdoor programming, you can see, you know, roughly the number of chairs that we could set up, which I think was like ninety-three. These little bubbles that are around the edge are, I believe are people's heads with the idea that you could seat another twenty-four people on this retaining wall, which would be at basically at chair height. And then, sorry, my landline is calling. I'm sure it's some spam. There's a little bubble that's standing there on the bricks, and that's meant to be a presenter to sort of give you the idea of the orientation so that the people in the chairs would, you know, in that scenario likely be facing the wall and you'd have room for a presenter there. And these white boxes that are sort of close to the exit there would be tables, like picnic tables or tables and chairs. And then down here in the corner is another patio space and then these sort of walls that are sort of built into the hill that would be sort of amphitheater seating, you know, again, like a stone wall that you'd be able to sit on. And so some of the things that we talked about were also maybe on one side or the other, maybe increasing the accessibility to the risers or the stone walls, the amphitheater seating. And you know, possibly just enhancing the access to the patio space. We also talked about possibly moving the amphitheater seating back a little bit closer to the patio which would maybe give us a little more space either at the patio or maybe more seating, you know, sort of playing around the edges with those kinds of things. And then the other thing that was contemplated that is not shown in this drawing would be a large pergola that would then go over the area where the, the, the chairs are set up, which would provide some shade. So that's sort of the, the basic idea. Brooke, do you want to add anything? From yesterday's meeting?
Um, no, well, maybe Megan put the, can you put the picture back up again? Did you say how the, the bushes would be on the other side of that walkway?
Right, that's right.
Yeah. So those little tiny circles, and I keep doing it with my mouse too. The little circles are going to go on the other side to create a divide between kind of that, that area there by the street, by Sawyer. And that walkway. And then I don't know if you talked about that back up here on the patio near the building, that there'd be a little walkway down to the parking lot. And those are, those are stairs there.
Right, stairway.
The stairways, the big circles are trees. And I think I'm trying to remember how big, because it is hard, for me anyway, it was, it was hard to kind of really determine how big each of these things would be. But do you remember how it was bigger than it, like it looks there? So the area where people are sitting?
I think that the, the Eric, excuse me, on the upper patio, I believe the depth, pardon me, of the, just the walkway, like the part where the, the picnic tables are and then sort of, you know, as it, as it comes across, that is, I believe, a width of fifteen feet. And then the width of the area where the chairs is set up, I, I don't recall, but.
Thirty-five.
What was it?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. I was going to say, I thought it was around thirty-something. Because it's about twice the width of the walkway. Which is still sort of hard to, just conceive in your mind's eye. But I mean, that's, that's I think that's pretty sizable, particularly when we're accustomed to not having anything out there.
Right. The other thing that's not shown here is that, remember, we had talked about creating a little space here. We're all, we have all the chairs set up on that upper patio so that it, someone could potentially walk through there and then down to where the stone wall is.
That's right. That was sort of a modification we talked about is adding a break to that wall so that would sort of help marry the two spaces a little bit more. We'd maybe, we'd sacrifice a couple of, you know, spaces for seating there, but it seems worthwhile for, you know, for having it. So the, you know, and the, the other idea is that, you know, think about ways that the spaces can be used together. And so obviously, if you, if you did have some kind of like a concert or an event or something on a larger scale, you could have a presenter down on the lower patio and you could have, you know, the viewing oriented, you know, down towards the lower patio. I suppose in that scenario, maybe people would be standing because if you were sitting, you probably wouldn't be able to see very well. But the other thing that I thought about with the upper patio is that having it oriented, looking towards the building, you could also add an outdoor TV or an outdoor screen that could be used to enhance any kind of programming or, or presentation that might be going on there too. And that would be pretty easy to do with it being right on the side of the building as far as getting the avian electrical there. So, so that's sort of where we stand at the moment as far as the, the concept. Do we have some feedback, thoughts, questions? I mean, early stages still, for sure.
Chris mentioned that it might make sense to put the patio at the same height, excuse me, as the internal library. So, for example, you could take the sleds with chairs from the existing meeting room and run them right out. Or if someone were in a wheelchair, they could go very easily. The other question I had was about the pergola. It's, I'm not sure it's going to provide shade. It'll pay, provide shade up towards the corner to the top of this picture. For the people that are sitting at the white tables. But.
Yeah, no, I, right, I see what you're saying because of the angle of the sun.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, I know that there are, there are screens and such that can be added to the inside of a pergola. I don't know whether that's something that we would think about adding at a later time. Of course, it's awkwardly shaped for that. But yeah, that is, that is a good point. I don't know if we were thinking about total shade or, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's a question that's something to think about.
Chris mentioned that the pergola was, was not insignificant in cost. So given that, I don't think it's going to, the nice thing about having all that space up on the patio is that it will certainly reduce sun issues. But if we could, instead of spending the money on the pergola, have something for, maybe you have just an aluminum structure of pipes that you could strap up or pull a cover over. Your shade.
Yeah, or a sail shade or something. I mean, you know, the only issue with something like that is, you know, it's staff, you know, and figuring out like who's going to be out there pulling the shade across if you're having programming and, you know, is it going to be onerous to, to get that done? So that would be a consideration with whatever.
Sun hit the highest there. Does that play in the design?
I don't know the answer to that, actually. We didn't ask about, and I don't, I mean, I guess.
I mean, I guess.
This is sort of, but I mean, I don't really know the, the angle exactly, but I mean, this is sort of north this way. Am I right? I mean, are we looking east at the front of the building?
The porch is running roughly north, south.
Right. So, I mean, afternoon, you're going to get hit.
But the morning program, I, I don't know.
The morning program ought to be much better off because your, the sun will be coming up in the northeast and the building will be blocking a lot of that.
Right. So. Yeah, definitely. So, and I think just as far as progress goes, you know, he sort of gave us a rough idea, like very, very, like, don't hold me to it, rough idea of what the ballpark figure would be. And, you know, I think it came out, you know, between two fifty and, you know, maybe including furnishings, maybe between two fifty and three hundred. And so, you know, I think the next thing is for us to, well, first of all, you know, just get all our heads together on the design and, and think about whether it's meeting the goals that we have talked about and, and then start thinking about how we go about addressing the cost. Right. So we have questions? Feedback? Thoughts? You love it, you hate it, anything?
I like it. I mean, I, I can't second guess. I think you guys did a great job and very thorough. I appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into this.
Yeah. I mean, I, I was, it was gratifying to see in our, in our few survey responses that, you know, space for outdoor programming is very much desired by the patrons. So, I mean, you know, and I think obviously we want to be able to serve the highest number of patients we can in the most efficient way we can and the most cost effective way we can. And, you know, I think it's, it's a good start for sure. So, and where do we stand on Cavanaro, Megan?
Oh, good question. He just called me today. So he is providing us the survey next week. He'll have it.
Oh, great. Okay.
Yeah, and then he's providing us a new contact person at Merrill as well. Should we need it.
Great.
What's more?
So from what I understand, John Cavanaro's company and Merrill Engineering merged. And so they're all under Merrill Engineering now, and I believe that John is moving on to the next chapter of whatever his. Whatever. He's decided to move on to. So, so anyway, so he won't be our contact anymore. And I believe that he is, the whole company is under Merrill Engineering.
All right. Great. Okay, so I think that's it for me. Which brings us to CLT. Catherine, do you want to cover that? You had a meeting last night, is that right?
We did, and both Carolyn and I were unable to attend, and I haven't caught up with Barb Whip. So if it's okay, I think I'll have Carolyn report next month on it. I think it was about, more about the nominating new trustees and of the CLT, which we'll have more information on next month as well.
All right. For the friends, I logged in briefly to our meeting, which was online on Thursday, and gave my trustees report. And then I had to sign off. I, I was trying to participate by phone. But that didn't, I never made it out of the waiting room once I saw the phone, so I missed the whole thing. So I don't know if Megan, you want to give us a thumbnail on what went on in the friends meeting?
So I was only there for a half an hour myself because that was the same day as the training. So I know they talked about the new bin at Stop and Shop is doing pretty well considering it's new. People are definitely noticing it. We are making a decent income on both of them. And I don't have the correct numbers in my head about that, but I know that it was positive. And I think that's all I can really recall. I, I gave my report. Talked to them about the training and what we were going to cover and, and the same thing I reported to you on, but I don't really have anything else to share.
Yeah, that's all right. We can, we can fill in more in the next meeting. And actually, while I'm on that topic, just getting back to, um. Splitting up the duties, um, getting to the friends meetings has been a challenge for me recently because, again, because of. It just always seems that Thursday is the day that I have to be somewhere. For work. And so, um. I also wanted to just throw out there, if anybody wanted to consider stepping into the friends liaison role. Um, if you know that you can reliably attend a meeting once a month on Thursday, the first Thursday at nine thirty AM. Let me know ASAP.
Do you say they're doing it on Zoom or in person?
Typically, we've been doing it in person. Um, just this, this month was, um, was via Zoom, but the, the, the few meetings before that were, were in person. So I think it's sort of, you know, month to month.
Right.
So, um, so more food for thought. Um, okay, so I think, is that everything? I think that's.
Kind of an off the wall question, but can you have more than nine trustees or is that a bylaw?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's, uh, prescribed. I'm not sure if that's in the bylaws or if that is like in the town.
Charter or maybe in the town, yeah, town charter. I know that trustees don't have bylaws or I believe, I should believe, I don't know. But I, I believe that there are not specific bylaws regarding this board. But there might be something written in the town charter. Um, I can take a look at that.
It just may, if there's, it seems to me that there's jobs to be done and, and positions to be held. It may make sense to broaden it up a little bit, when maybe with, um, two more trustee members and. You know, eleven or twelve, or I don't know if you need an odd number for voting. But wait, my last words of wisdom before I shut the door.
Megan, maybe, and you, uh, you could send out, uh, email to your fellow directors, asking them. How they have found effectively to reduce the load on the chair, what, how to divide it up.
I can certainly ask. What was the number of the trustees at the, in Randolph when you were there?
Um, we had. I think it was, it was either seven or nine. Okay, um. For our population size, we have a generous amount of trustees, and that's not to stop us from adding anymore. But just for like reference, like Holbrook and Avon, some of our similar sized communities only have three trustees. That won't work for us because we're. More awesome than them, but, um. Just saying, it's, it's sometimes, it's, it's based on population size and we do have a smaller population, but that is not to discourage us from doing whatever we want to do.
And I didn't mean to be, um, cute about saying not to, uh, volunteer. But if, I think if you divide it up that way, there may be some piece that. That I could help out with as, as probably is the case for all of us.
Yeah, definitely. Well, I think Megan's idea is the right one. Megan Brinsey's idea to, to make a list, that's always the good starting point and any kind of. You know, organizational endeavor. So, um, so I will do that and get that out to all of you. And then, you know, maybe that's how we do it, we just sort of claim a few things. But I think if we were going to try and. We'd probably have to have something relatively formal if more than one person was going to be able to sign the bills. That would probably have to be memorialized somewhere. So. We can figure that out too before the next meeting. So. All right. Well, I think that's everything. Again, Catherine O'Callaghan, thank you so much. All the best. And, um, all right. So, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're adjourned at seven nineteen. Thanks, everybody. See you.